So let's start because Susie will be here ASAP. I know. And the only thing we're gonna do is go around with boards and commissions and say what's happening because I think for Matthews, we need to do those board updates first because for him to hear a little bit about what some of these boards are about. And then I want to talk about the continuing of the conversation that we had on a pre-session that you couldn't attend there about what is the need for liaisons? Is it quarterly? Is it every time? And what do the boards and commissions that you're on, what do they think? What do they want in case? So. I'll just start, actually. Yes?
As you're doing your board discussion, I'm finding that I may have to start attending some board meetings and be good if the council liaisons could help when it comes up. We're starting to see more occasions of boards moving into the council role in terms of policy and trying to implement policy that council hasn't gotten. And the other thing that we're seeing is getting into the world of operational direction.
Yes.
Which I go to the... When I go to them, like council can't even do that. And so it would help us as staff is if you see that happening, if you could help the liaisons as they're moving through that. We're just, I've seen, there's more than a handful of things that have come to my attention recently.
Are there one or two examples you can give just so I understand what you're seeing or hearing?
Well, so...
Did I do that on the planning question?
Did I do that?
I don't know.
I hope you and Aaron did some.
I don't know. So it, you know, it'll be, you know, where I've had to go to the airport board and they'll say, "We want you to do this operationally," and that's not in the airport board's purview because they're an advisory board. We have one issue coming that we talked about today, another case of the Sustainability Advisory Board and the land transa... The land transactions of Prab. Saying what we wanted on the agenda and the process is very specific to Prab in terms of the other boards. And, you know, I've had to go to the library board in the past about, you know, directing staff operationally. And so I have a list back to my office. But I just wanted you all to know that I'm telling staff that the policy direction comes from the council. They're an advisory board to you all. And if they're starting to delve into the policy world, they need to be aware about that. And the same with operational direction. So just you all could help us if you see it, you see a staff member struggling. That'd be a big help if you could jump in.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
So I am going to start with the board updates. First one I want to talk about is Front Range Passenger Rail, and that is not a city board, obviously, as I am on that board. There are target dates that Front Range Passenger Rail along with RTD and CDOT have to make as far as joint operations. And the first one that's coming up is March 1st, which is due this. So out of that, the governor has asked for a financial analysis, which means that each entity has got to say, "What money are you bringing to the table?" Front Range Passenger Rail has no money. And that's because all our money's coming from federal grants to start. So that could be a problem as well as state funding that the governor has set up through SB 184 for rental car fees, for oil and gas dollars. And what was the other one? CTO dollars, which is basically traffic, you know, that we get our, what's it called? HUTF funding from. So he's redirecting some of that. But what they want, what our governor's liaison, Lisa, Lisa, I don't know, three Lisas, I always get mixed up. Anyway, so with the...
What's her last name?
Kaufman. Lisa Kaufman with the government's office. And you probably all know Putman, John Putman. He's been helping us with many issues over the years. They came up with a plan and they showed it to Karen Baker and I. What they want to do is funding through all the, all of the funding pools that we have, especially the $90 million from Christie Grants, so that they can run the train from Union Station to Fort Collins as a demo by 2020. So that would, that's four years, which is amazing with no tax increase from the public. Now, the federal, the national funding has gotten all screwed up, so we're not sure if the Treasury Department is going to open their doors and fund what they've already promised us. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about this and I want to bring it to, to council immediately. And then if it goes the way we think it's gonna go, then we're gonna, Karen Baker and I are gonna hold a big event and let the public and some of the other elected officials who are on the northwest corridor. The, the thing that I like about it is that the northwest corridor that is unfinished, which is Westminster, Lewisville, and Brumfield, FRPR is taking that over. So we're taking that off of RTD's plate to finish the northwest corridor. However, they have to put in a huge amount of money. If they don't do this, it will kill the entire project. So Karen Baker is fighting really hard for us. I'm meeting with the new RTD directors that just got elected. And the interesting thing is I met Chris Nicholson and he needed to get back to Union Station and he was very frustrated. He said, "To get to Union Station from Longmont took me two hours." And I said, "Of course." Yeah. "I'm glad you did that." And the new person, Joanne, she's supposed to meet with me, but she said, "I can't figure how to get out, get there and back on my timeline." So I thought, "Good, that's what I want you to see." So that, that update. We had a Historic Preservation Commission retreat. And just as FYI, they are, the Historic Preservation Committee is doing surveys all over Longmont to find where the, where the, within those sections, where are the historic land, whether it's agriculture or buildings, houses that people lived in that have been sort of figures. Those are expensive and they asked me, and of course, I didn't say anything because I don't want it to be me making policy at the Preservation Commission, but they would like for council contingency funding to be part of this so that they can make local matches and grants. So just a heads up, that's coming your way. We also had the Longmont Economic Development partnership retreat, which I thought went very well. Nothing significant coming out of that, but again, there's a little bit of policymaking in LEBP that Harold is very well aware of. That's the, oh, in GLA, I've only been to one meeting, did you have an update on that? I gave them an update this Thursday as the, on Front Range Passenger Rail and RTD were going. So the rest of it is not worth talking about. So who wants to go next?
I've got it.
Okay.
I've got it. So Consortium of Cities, they wanted to know how we went about, you know, informing all of us as council members about the legislative process. So Sandy helped me out and had a great thing. And of course Boulder said, wanted to talk about actual legislative items. And it was not really quite what the, the prompt was. And that was just how we have a staff liaison telling us, you know, what's down to the State House. It's listed on our website and everything like that. And then they were taking actual, talking about actual action that their councils made. And I, and she had examples of recent things that we had on that to show, you know, what we had done. But that was basically it. Some, you know, usually Longmont and Boulder have some sort of, you know, presentations prepared and others are just kind of like, "Hey, we're gonna do some of why." So they see which ones we do and how we do it and everything. It was kind of intended originally to be prepared so that when we went to the National League of Cities, that we collectively could talk about specific legislation that we wanted for the area. So like, I think that probably the best thing, since I think Shakira and I going, would be the, to try to see how we could get federal funding for the rail in that section there would be the logical one because that's, that would be the area that we want to have completed. And I don't know, your rail.
I'm sure you know.
Any sort of federal grants that we could get and opportunities we could give for the rail would be the only thing I could see right now that we could even kind of venture into. Because that was what the intention of this, when we talked about it over two months ago, that's what the intention was. Hey, we're all, many of us are headed that direction in March. How about we have this meeting in February to, to bring us together for those that were going? And the county folks kind of missed the mark on it. And so we talked about these other things that were more locally legislatively. So nevertheless, it's something I know whatever you guys would ask Shakira and I to carry forward, we would do. So that was the intention of that. Kind of missed there. So that's the way it goes. I had parentage conferences for the Airport Advisory Board liaison, so I didn't, I didn't get a chance to do that. And there was some weird stuff, there was something else going on. I think our, something we were doing with council for the Gulf Advisory Board. So that one was this. And then I went to the Prab and Prab is dealing with, of course, this issue around the discolored and tall properties. And they're right now in still kind of limbo setting because they ran out of time at the meeting. A lot of people were there to talk and Steph gave a good explanation of what was going on. But they're still in kind of a holding pattern because they felt like they needed a few questions answered. So they're going to come back next month and hopefully get those questions answered before they give us a recommendation to us.
Great.
That was it.
Prab is Parks and Recreation Advisory Board?
Yep. Sorry. Yes, Parks and Recreation. Sorry. I know, when I first got on this panel, it was like, what?
So I can go next? I don't have any updates.
You do?
I need to go.
Slacker. I'm trying to go over mine. I did have a question about, wasn't it, I thought it was state legislative stuff?
Well, that's how it ended up being. No, it was...
Because in the email that I got, I get from Nick, it said on there, "State..."
So I sent this on to, they missed the point of what we had asked them to do.
Got it, got it.
We had asked them to do one about the federal stuff that we would, could all come together because Lafayette was thinking about going to the, to the National League Cities and Boulder probably is gonna be going. So it was like, "Hey, what can we do to come together?" So they totally missed it.
No, that's fine. Because at the state level, something I heard today at our association, it's cool, but $3 billion shortfall at the state level is what the Colorado Education Association Legislative Staff Member was telling. For the state.
Because of national cuts?
I, I don't know. I don't know if it's the taxes, the outcome of some of these bills that have passed to kind of, you know, to cut, to alleviate tax increase. So that's why I was wondering what would be the impacts to us at the city level, if there was discussion on that?
None of those were discussed.
Okay.
They were talking about gun rights.
Okay, got it. So Arcab had their, their retreat. So this, you know, as a non-voting member, I real... Arcab, the Resource Conservation Advisory Board of Boulder County. Yeah, it's, it's a long one, so I just go with Arcab. I don't know if it's composting stuff. It's recycling. So there was an extensive discussion around the regional composting facility. I just, again, I don't say a lot as a non-voting member and I know that we have some things in the works.
Boulder County Resource Conservation.
Boulder County Resource Conservation.
It should be just...
Is it under Boulder County first?
It's under Boulder, yeah.
Boulder County, yes. Okay.
So Susie, if they're talking about composting, the county and the city are working together?
Yes, yes. And so Nicole, I let Nicole take the lead on that one.
Okay.
As far as that discussion.
Great.
With the work that Charlie Canitas had started and Harold and things that we're seeing in our pipeline. So looking at that piece. And then just, it was really just looking at what direction the advisory board wants to go as far as legisl, or advocating for policies through two Boulder County Commissioners. So we really want to, it sounded like they really want to get like fine tuned and have specific direction. I think for the longest time it was kind of, you know, just kind of all over the place and something over here. We didn't really have a direction. So now it's coming together. It's like we need to have a set direction in where we're gonna go moving forward as far as advocating for, for dollars of Boulder County and see, yeah, and just what the needs are. So there was a lot of discussion around the composting facility and Nicole did a great job with presenting that work.
Good.
So yeah, yeah, I really like her. The museum, on the 27th of this month, so next Thursday, I believe, they're having a joint meeting with the Friends of the Museum members at 5:30. The library did that a few months, or last fall, and it was really, it was very beneficial. So that was something that the museum, you know, I shared, you know, the pros of having that kind of collaboration. So the museum advisory board is doing the same. And then library, they did their board roles, appointees, you know, their elections for their chair and all that. So it wasn't very, you know, unbeneficial for, for us. But they're working on developing their action plan. They really want to focus more on targeting, you know, at need or high needs students, youth, as well as elderly in the community, kind of working on, on how to rearrange, rearrange what they're doing now and to get the most bang for their buck. Youth council, it's an ongoing, they're doing their thing, you know, they have their projects. They're just working on it going.
Do they want to announce it?
No, no, they're not.
They're just doing that.
Yeah.
I thought Jenny was gonna try to get through the whole issue.
Yeah. No, the last few times that I've gone, she's been out of town or other, other meetings. So, you know, I keep, keeps missing each other.
But they only went one time in the time I've been on council and they did come to council for funding. And I think that would be...
They don't have budget. Yes. They don't have the budget. And the other, that was, that was one of the things. But the other one was looking at the city summit over Washington DC. So finding which one would be more beneficial for the group and where were there more opportunities for, for shops that they had. So that, I think that Jenny had mentioned several months ago that they were leaning towards the city summit one.
But they could go up on the hill.
Yes.
For Hill Day?
Yeah.
It's a great opportunity for them to go at the Capitol, the nation's Capitol, you know, give them opportunities to speak in front of their representatives and things like that. Just providing those opportunities for them.
And how much was it to go? I think, you know...
Youth is cheaper.
Youth is cheaper. It's like, I know they don't have the budget, the registration and the stay and all that. So they don't have it within their budget to do that.
Yeah, we could, that's something we would pay for anyway.
I agree. I agree. But I also think it would be really good because they are a council.
They are, they are.
To listen to how the city council talks to their representatives and what we're asking for.
And how far we gotta walk to get there.
Yeah.
Just saying.
That's why I'm not going this year.
Yes. And, and they're still trying to pin down a date to have a joint council to council meeting with us.
Everybody's waiting.
So, and that's all.
Even if it's a...
And Walker Thrash did present to the teachers, 16 of us, 63 of us in the room, and I got to be there. So getting people signed up for the...
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's great.
The roll.
That's great.
Yes.
Cool.
We're getting that super on our end.
One billion.
One billion?
One billion is what I just read.
Yeah.
State budget deficit.
One billion.
Yeah. I was like, yeah.
That's great.
But that's a billion. Making my eye twitch a little bit.
Yeah.
Every time there's so much of you there. When you...
Okay, Shakira.
Okay. I'm glad this is right here because I always forget something.
I did too.
So Transportation Advisory Board, I forgot all my notes at home. But basically, we went over the CIP, this capital improvement projects, and also the mobile transportation mobility plan. The advisory board approved that or with some adjustment. And they also mentioned that next month we'll have RTD, we'll be doing a presentation.
Really?
Yeah, we won't be here because we'll be in pain. So...
That's probably why they're having a...
Probably. What day is that? Do you remember?
The, the first Monday, is it the first? Whenever our Transportation Advisory Board is...
Okay, okay.
That's when they'll, they'll be, they'll have their presentation.
In March?
Yes. It was great.
I was gonna say second Monday.
Second Monday.
Second Monday.
Okay, okay.
Will we be here on second Monday?
No, I won't be here because I'll be in DC. You'll be here, so you can go.
Oh, great.
I can go for you.
Are you going to DC?
No.
No, I saw you.
You were here.
They, I don't have all the stats, but it looks like Rod Longmont is amazing.
10,000.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it was 9,000 when I was at the meeting.
Yes.
So that is really, really, really good. Really good.
You might be a victim of our own success there.
Never.
They're getting more calls than they can...
But, but...
That's a good problem to have.
That is a good problem to have. And then what Phil has said, that looking at their data for the company that we use, they should be monitoring.
Yes.
And then adjusting and saying, "Okay, we need, they need more drivers. They need another vehicle. They need, you know." Or longer hours or whatever. So that's the whole point. I mean, that happens so quick. They said that we like the top of all the programs that have been initiated throughout the US that they've done, that we, we are the first ones to actually have that many in a short period of time.
And Boulder's incredibly envious.
Oh, oh, I know. I know, I've been getting text messages about the new magazine too, that somehow my picture is in that magazine.
Oh.
I didn't know about it. So...
What's with the magazine?
Longmont's, huh? Magazine, I think. Y'all didn't know that we got a new mag, Longmont has a new magazine. We're up and coming.
Is it the Longmont magazine?
This is in print.
The Longmont magazine.
Not, no.
I see, I see them at Longspine Pub.
Oh, you do? Well, anyway, I've been getting a whole bunch of text messages and I'm like, "I need me a copy of this magazine." Everybody keeps texting me. Where am I at? Let's go on to the North Area Transportation Alliance Steering Committee. You're welcome instead of NADA. So... They just basically, it was basically an argument between RTD and CDOT. It got pretty testy.
What was this about?
Just about who was doing what and who's not doing, who's not doing what they're supposed to do. And it wasn't in our area. It's about closing some of the non-performing or lack of areas that lack movement as far as parking rides. And so they were talking about some areas of closing parking rides. And then they said, the problem was if you close those areas, then that's gonna bring more people that are unhoused in those areas because there's no action at all. And so at least it's already lit up and people are over there. So anyway, CDOT was blaming RTD, RTD was blaming CDOT. And so, yeah, it was a little drama going on that day.
You just have your popcorn and just...
I know, right? It was 7:30 in the morning, so...
Coffee.
Coffee, coffee. And then we're supposed to be having a retreat next month. So that's basically that. And where else am I? I did not attend the Longmont Downtown Development Authority because I had a meeting with the housing, which Molly and everybody, remember I did the facilitation for that issue? Yeah, so I wasn't able to attend. And that was our retreat. So I didn't get a chance to attend that. And then what else?
Sister Cities.
Sister Cities. That is a lot too. We, the mayor has completed all of her signature stuff as far as her speeches and all those things. The invitation has been sent out to their mayor for inviting them here. So they're really looking forward to us arriving and they're so organized, like I had a meeting, we had a meeting at 7 o'clock last Saturday, which was 11 o'clock their time to go over everything. They have seating arrangements, who's gonna sit where, all these things. So they're, they're really excited about it. And also they have some questions about the city and economic things that we're gonna talk about, the mayor and myself, and maybe I guess it probably breaks from the city, I'm not sure. And Courtney to talk about some of the things about what are we doing as a city of Longmont that's comparable to what they can do, you know, because we're a similar city, although we've grown double the size, they're still in the 50s.
They are?
Yeah, I believe so, like 55, 60,000. That's what they were when we became Sister Cities with them. So, so, yeah. Last thing I want to mention is that April 6th is on a Sunday at the fairgrounds at the big exhibition center, we will have our second annual Life Skills Fair.
Okay.
This time around, with support from Harold and of course the Youth and Family Services, they want, we're having a parent component. I have nothing to do with the parent component. Not that I have anything to do with anything, but the youth portion of it is all of it together. So the, you know, that big building is so huge, they're gonna separate it and they're gonna have some volunteers, probably from the youth council to come. And I suggest they have wristbands for the parent of one color and the students of different color and they're gonna go on their, each side. And so the parents will be learning about city programs. Some vendors will also, will be on both sides, so for the students and also for the parents. So if they're learning about how to stop drop and roll, they probably don't do that anymore, they'll be teaching it on both sides, if that makes sense. You know, so the programs and things like that, what the city offers. Target is there again, they're gonna be on both sides because they need employees. So they're gonna be talking to parents and probably talking to students. Front Range will be on both sides, talking about financial aid and telling students about their programs. So April 6th, I'm pretty sure we'll need some volunteers on, that's on a Sunday. We'll again have a DJ, have food trucks. I think we have several, over 20 vendors for both sides, so...
Sounds great. Thank you. Do you need any seamstresses?
That's why I was gonna ask that as well.
Are you gonna?
I can do, yeah.
Well, yeah.
I can show them how to make two tubes.
No tubes.
And will people get hourly? I think we're gonna have this for four hours instead of two hours because everybody complained about two hours was not long enough.
Not long enough. So I can find some people from the dance studios. Yeah.
Okay.
I have some friends.
So you know you're telling me that means it's set in stone.
It's set in stone, I know. I have to yell at them. Get my sewing machine.
Whatever you gotta do, don't be putting no fingers up in there, so...
Sew my hair in there.
Well, I'm saying some of the kids will come over that you may not...
Did you already go?
Oh, no, I haven't gotten any.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. North I-25 Coalition, Segment 5 received $5 million in Longmont County, which is where Longmont County Road pretty torn next. They had a five-year bloodstorm... They, uh, had a five-year flood storm in last May, which left four foot deep divots along the side of the highway. And so, um, they're working on flood disillusions for a hundred-year flood there. This is CDOT, um, they're also improving the highway this week. And, um, so they used, um... They're diverting the water into the Little Thompson, they're using dirtwork and engineering techniques. Um, appreciate that CDOT has been working segment by segments, only portions of I-25 are torn up at one time, which differs from RTD's process, I'm just saying. Where they just tore everything up going into Boulder. Um, there was some conversation about, uh, lane splitting. This is of course very important to everybody. Um, lane splitting is illegal. However, if you're going less than fifteen miles per hour, motorcycles are able to lane split, just so you know, and go down the center. And, um, they're adding shoulders, wider shoulders, um, in particular segments so that EMS vehicles can get through accident sites quicker. Let's see. That's pretty much it for, um, the I-25 Coalition. Uh, visit Longmont, the World Ice Competition is February twenty-second through the twenty-third, that's next weekend. Um, and it's at the Climbing Collective out to...
The World Ice Competition?
Yes, the World, the year is coming here for the World Ice Climbing Competition.
At the Climbing Collective?
The Climbing Collective, which is, um, kind of out by Smucker's.
Okay, okay.
Longmont team.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll have a lot of people in the city.
Yes, yes.
Best behavior everyone, right?
Well...
What, what did you say?
Uh, the twenty-second through the twenty-third of February.
You can have that trolley.
And they, they do have, yeah, tickets, I think they're like a hundred and twenty-nine dollars or something. And then you get like solid toilets, maybe you pay that fee, so otherwise there'll be court bodies out there. It's kind of gold, I'm just saying. Um, yeah.
Why, why here?
Why not?
I'm just curious, why?
Because we're here.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's a reason, it's impressive.
Yeah, I know, they've been planning it for the last year and a half.
The owner is really aggressive in marketing.
Yeah, she is, in marketing, yeah.
Her personality question?
Yeah.
They have a, uh, the Climbing Collective has a really strong relationship with the climbing community. So, just generally, so if you've ever heard of Alex Arnold?
Yes.
So they have connections with him and other folks, now that's a different group. Uh, because this is ice climbing, it used to be in Denver. Uh, but, yeah, in terms of climbers, that group is connected.
Should be pretty interesting, at least buy and take a look. Um, so February twenty-fifth, which is next Tuesday, the Visit Longmont Group will be bringing, um, the TID, um, to council. Which is the Tourism Improvement District Council. Um, and so, as a liaison, they gave me a contract to sign. And I, after talking to, um, City Attorney Mayor, he and I have decided that I should not sign that contract, so. Don't be signing that contract. They're, you know, they require things of their board members, and it just kind of goes beyond what I can do as a council member. So. The Fire and Police Pension Boards are meeting next Thursday, February twenty-sixth, Mayor and I are on it, so somehow we're always out of cycle.
Yeah.
Um, and the Water Board brought cash and lieu fees, uh, for the Water Council last month, brought the Water Conservation Strategy to council last month, um, and the council, council through both. And then I wrote an endorsement to help ASRO receive help, uh, from the Water Conservancy District to host a Community Water Academy, which, uh, we got approved for. So, September, uh, twenty-twenty-five, and then they'll say water stories to explain. I don't know if y'all are aware, but the headwaters, um, the Colorado River are just right up by Hoover Valley there and recommend finishing apart. I mean, it's really kind of a big stewardship, the, the relationship we have with water here, because it all, it all starts here. So, um, so it's kind of nice to inform the public and explain why we conserve.
Especially with the belt, this, uh...
Right. Right. And, um, Colorado River is one of the most damned rivers in the United States. Just read a book called Damned.
That's a two F, it's not an F.
Damned, yeah. A lot of photographs, and I, it was interesting because a lot of photographs, I'm like, oh, I've been there, you know, because it starts here, so. So, um, the Vision Zero Task Force met... Is it last Thursday? They, I was gonna go. It was Thursday before. We couldn't use you there, it was kind of skinny. Um, we met at the Senior Center.
Right.
And that's supposed to be the first Thursday of even months, so the next one will be April third. We're breaking down into two groups where we're looking over the data, and gonna agree on what the data says, and then there's another that's gonna work more on, um, process, I guess, we're not getting into terms of any policy or anything. Um, but I would like to see more people attend, so I'm trying to come up with that. I wonder about using the Senior Center because of all the construction there, so a lot of the people that came were from, you know, just the downtown.
Yeah, but all the people complained, the meeting before, when we, the meeting we were at, they wanted to move around the city.
Right.
Other than that, we could've just had it here.
Right, but it seems like it's just gonna be at the Senior Center, but I think it's kind of complicated to find, find your way around. At least I took two, two different turns to get, actually to the Senior Center. Um, we had coffee with council on Saturday, the three of us were there, so. So, well, the head group, um, I wanted to talk about the missing metal and the defect law legislation, and a review of Envision Longmont, um, about empty commercial sites in town and about green space, particularly some of the issues over at Homer Acres. And then, you know, protecting our views in terms of height, uh, for new buildings, and, um, there was some detailed questions about the LPC smart meters, which both of you were there, you had to talk about. And then, um, just, um, if we could ask supplementary agreements for, for that space that surrounds Longmont. Yeah, and then we were... We had issues with the microphones, that sort of thing, because they...
That was the most, that was actually the most controversial one.
Yeah, they were, she was gonna throw this away, I'm gonna start over, and then somebody said we should have a podium, and Sandy said, I'm not gonna be responsible for putting that podium there.
Podium, oh my...
Yeah, so, might just have a mic stand.
Someone said, you're out of ADA compliance if you're shouting and not speaking into a microphone.
Yes, that gets mentioned every time we go down.
Same way.
Yes. Save our time. Erin.
Um, so Housing and Human Services, I believe they generally go a little light at the beginning of the year because they have such a backloaded schedule, uh, so basically...
Sorry, why do they have a, why do they have a backloaded schedule? Everyone knows the joke, but I don't.
Not really a joke, but they provide their grant recommendations to the various organizations, and before they do that, they interview and tour all the organizations, so it takes a long time. And it's very, you know, a lot beyond, a lot more meetings beyond their one per month, like most boards would be.
And does that feed into the budget cycle of the city, is that why it's like kind of mid to end of year?
Um, how did you, how?
How's he?
The Human Service Agency funding, they get three percent of the revenues from the general fund, so it doesn't necessarily fit into the budget, the budget says this is how much money you have.
It just happens at the same time.
Right.
Oh.
So they primarily, like, most of their, their, um, agendas have been reviewing twenty-twenty-four, looking, you know, forward at twenty-twenty-five goals, and specifically one was having a conversation surrounding, uh, CD BG funding, not knowing the certainty of how that funding is going to be, you know, in the future. Um, as far as planning and zoning, as you can imagine, every time we have this meeting is the week before planning and zoning, uh, or the, or the day before planning and zoning, I should say. There are two meetings in January. The first one, I would say, was probably the more substantial one, and I'm sure council has already heard about it because it involved a denied decision for a quick trip in a, in a parcel that we, that they previously have denied development for before, that we have held, yeah, appeal, so it's an appeal that's coming to us. Um, I think you all probably got the, the email from Jeremy Tyrell about that. And, and then the, the second meeting.
Can I just make a quick note on that?
Okay.
It's very likely I will have to recuse myself from that. I was not on, I was not present at the commission meeting, but for reasons that, once I clarify with the city attorney, I may have to peruse your network to just answer.
So this, the second, uh, meeting of January was primarily focused around kind of education and training. I know there was a lure training and there's some other training, but, uh, I think the big thing was that they began, um, providing guidance concerning the mobility plan, and, uh, they are, that's what's on the schedule tomorrow, is they're continuing, uh, their review of the mobility plan, is the transportation mobility plan just one? Right?
The transportation mobility plan, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, they started it last month and they're continuing it tomorrow. So, yeah.
One thing that's shakita when you mentioned, uh, CDOT and I-25 going at each other about, uh, partner knife, what's, what RTD is doing is they have a huge park and ride, I think it is in Thornton, that they are going to build affordable housing on. And I had heard this years ago when Eric Davidson first got, uh, elected, but they might be looking at that park and ride and the maintenance building on two eighty-seven. It used to be, it is a stop now. Well, it used to be when we, I know it's one. Um, so we should keep our eye open for that, that is one way they're trying to make dollars as well, but they really sold that land very cheaply to the developer, so. I, I think that their point is, if we're gonna do TOD, then we're not gonna need all this park and ride space because it's going to be, people are gonna be actually living next to the rail.
Oh, that's not, hey, we're saying, yeah, they were, oh, what did they say? Well, there were a lot of people complaining about, that's the only transportation, that's the stop with people who live in that area that come from downtown Denver, and it stops there, and that's the park and ride. Off, you know, because it's right off of the I-25. And, um, and they said, oh, we're gonna move it down, um, what is that, Branch, which street is that, that it's on? Anyway, they're talking about moving it down maybe a mile, and they're like, no way. That's, that's the problem. They did talk about the housing portion, but people were not happy, period, about that. Because like you said, it was talked about eight years ago, and, and they were saying, well, what can we do to redirect people back to that park and ride, you know? Um, so, I don't know what's gonna happen.
I don't either. RTD's coming out with some strange things at the Northwest Neighbors and Families Coalition meeting. Lynn Dyson, who is the director for Boulder, a little part of Longmont, but not enough for her to care about Longmont. She had said in August for her update that the LX one was either gonna come back from January or June, and I, you know, I said, well, this is the fourth year I've heard this, so I don't believe you.
The LX one is the one to the airport?
No, LX one is the one-seat ride from, uh, Longmont to Union Station that a lot of people would, would ride in that way. Um, so just last week, she gave another update, and she said, I was not happy. She said, um, well, I think we're going to bring back limited service on the LX one in September of twenty-twenty-five. I said, wait a minute, just three months ago, you told us it would be either January or June. I said, that's why I'm putting all my efforts in the front edge passenger rail, because do not believe what RTD is saying at all. She was head down riding furiously, she wasn't looking. But, um, you know, I just, uh, they don't know what they're doing. And, um, there's a new bill that's out, one sixty-one, SB one sixty-one, that, uh, is reimagining the management staff of RTD. My problem is that, my concerns with it is that a lot of their mandates for reports and everything is gonna be in twenty-twenty-six. So they have like two years, and I thought, no, do it now, they, you give them too much leeway. So, um, I'm very frustrated with that.
And that explains CDOT because actually that park and ride is part of their I-25 mobility plan.
Yes.
And it's on there, so I can see why CDOT's pretty hot about that.
And the other thing that, that they keep telling us when I ask them, why are you giving two more buses to Boulder? And none to us, give them one and give us one. At least, I'm not saying we don't need any more, but they are now using, it used to be ridership, they would say we can't have it for ridership, but now they're using, they call it value-added? And I said, what's the value, what's the add? They can't answer that, none of the directors can describe that, but now they are literally...
Catchphrase.
Now they're literally saying Title VI.
Mark, marketers would use that value-added all the time to talk about how you add something to something, but there's no value added.
So, um, Title VI now is what they're using, and if you don't know what Title VI is, the NAACP, I think it was in the nineteen-sixties, that, for racial equity, and I said, excuse me, we're thirty percent Hispanic, Mexican, all the Americas. Uh, not to mention, uh, the seven hundred families of Nepalese we have here. Why are you using Title VI against us to remove our bus rides? So...
And Boulder's has a higher population of Nepalese?
No.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
That area's on his way.
What about the Sky Ride, are they ever gonna bring back the buses?
Well, that's what I'm trying to work on, so. Yes, yes, so. Well, um...
Can I ask one question? Aaron, actually, so one of the follow-on discussions at the P and Z meeting, which was such as the I-25, um, because I was appointed but not sworn in, so that was the last one. It was a follow-up on the TMP was looking at, um, bike parking standards in the code, and, and more interested in understanding council's process here and how we handle this. The, in, in a very quick nutshell, the bike code has not been updated, particularly for bike parking requirements since twenty-fourteen. That doesn't, so it's, it's currently five, for any new developments, five percent of the parking, vehicular parking spaces is the, is how that minimum of bike parking is determined for any type of development, residential, commercial, retail. And it's indiscriminate though. As the city got rid of parking minim, uh, parking minimums last year, now there's not even a, like, a requirement for the developer to go towards that, and one, I'm wondering if tying... So, so we were exploring in the P and Z meeting whether tying bike parking minimums to vehicular parking spaces is one, set at the right percentage, and two, the right tie-in and alignment in the first place, especially as e-bikes really take rise in the front range, which for perspective in the state, I think they're estimating by twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-two, about a million, million and a half, sorry, a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand e-bikes, not a million, a hundred and twenty thousand e-bikes across the front range. But that would be, uh, about one-tenth of the registered vehicles in Colorado as a few years ago. So it's a pretty sizable amount, and that's e-bikes, not even including regular bikes. So, um, we were exploring whether to update it. We don't have to get into a discussion of like whether we should or what threshold right now, I'm just curious from a process standpoint, like, how does commission get information, we learn about information? How do we then offer direction vis-à-vis council to staff or some of the committees or boards if that is a direction? Like, how does that work?
Well, I say, generally speaking, we don't get, uh, code change unless there's more than one, uh, to, for efficiency sake, obviously. It's not to have a standalone code change or something like that, so usually we get other packages.
Yeah, I think when they bring that to you all, they'll present all of that and tell you what the boards are recommending, planning commissions are recommending. You all can then evaluate that if you want to look at doing something different or changing.
But it wasn't coming to the, it was, it was like a study session format with that, and it's not part of the TMP. So it was more a topic that we ran into from some developments at the time, uh, than building what we thought were an inadequate number, but they were building... building what we thought were an inadequate number, but they were building more than the, but like, for the new cities off of airport, the minimum there, if they have 30 vehicular bike parking spaces, is one and a half, and a U-Rack is two spaces to begin with. So they were required to go with one U-Rack for a coffee shop next to multifamily and RMN areas. So we ran into that, where like requiring more than the minimum would have treated it differently.
I think when they bring the TNP to council, to your point, to.
To integrate this in.
To integrate that in.
So this would be a reason, is that something we should give them direction in advance of that? Because I don't know what the right threshold is, like, it's not an easy answer. Probably it should be by different types of zoning, different.
For different uses?
Yeah.
Um, let me get with you.
Okay.
Cool, thanks. I'm just trying to understand the process still, thank you.
So let's go with these liaisons, uh, and everybody tell me what you think. Uh, it came up, basically a conversation that we had with the young council, uh, because with Marsha being absent, but Marsha has one, two, three, four, five, six, um, different boards that she was on, um, so. And what I want to know, the boards that we're on, do you, because we've all been there quite a few times, do we need to go every month? Do some of them only quarterly? Do we need to do this at all? And just think about the boards that you're on. I know that, um, the historic preservation wants me there every, or whoever it is, uh, every meeting, and so does NGLA, uh, Native Leaders Association. But I don't know about the others, so, um, you look too comfortable. You're looking incredibly comfortable.
I've got cold.
What's, what's the reason that Historic gives? Like, I understand why NGLA wants one, but having sat on Historic for like six years.
They, um, they said because some of their, some of their, um, decisions, like, like every decision, even planning and zoning, takes more than one board meeting, and they would want the consistency of knowledge from the liaison to go with that.
I hadn't seen, I hadn't seen that from the Historic Preservation Commission cast.
I asked them at the retreats, and they said we would like you there every meeting.
Do they televise that one? That was, they're gonna do it in chambers, but they don't televise it.
Which ones are recorded?
All.
Oh, okay.
All of them are?
Take the.
Pretty, pretty much all the city advisory boards are recorded.
Oh, okay.
But only PNC accounts are live streamed.
Uh, I see.
I, I would definitely say, from a point of view, the airport advisory board, you covered it after the last couple of times, if you can, if, and to Harold's point, to, to be there to kind of stop things from getting a little out of hand as they can there. And it's not, it's not always the board members that are doing, it's a lot of, of the community that kind of gets that one ratcheted up, but it's good to have a council liaison there each one.
Okay. What other ones that you want?
Uh, the part, uh, the parks and open space, and that's another one that I feel like there's an expectation.
For every?
Yeah, but then when I look at my golf board and the Longmont Public Media, and, uh, they're, they're, they could probably do it every other month or.
Quarterly.
Quarterly. Definitely, uh, for the sake of knowing where the other county, uh, communities are, you know, being at the, that county, consortium of cities is important.
So I'm sorry, consortium cities is what?
Is every other month, so that's definitely.
Okay, um, Shakita.
I think that the ones that we're voting, where we, where we vote, our voices make a difference. I think we should attend every month. The ones that we're, we don't have to vote on, we're non-voting, I think it could be once a quarter. I think, since all of them are recorded anyway, um, I think the requirement should be once a quarter if you're non-voting. I do, however, like for myself, for anyone who's on transportation, I think it is, I think it's, uh, there's so much information going on that is, one would want to probably go as, as much as possible, but since you're not voting, I, there's been many times where there's talks about the, the budget, the CIPs, the finances, and number one thing I tell Phil, that's like, you need to get Teresa over here to go over the budget, you know, because I don't want to be the one to say.
Exactly.
You know what I'm saying? So I say you need to have someone, um, to come in and go over the budget, so that they can understand what, what's in there, you know, when Jim was still here, so, um, so I do think that there's so much going on with transportation. That would be a board I would say we should still have, especially with all the action going on with Kaufman and, you know, and with everything, we got a lot going on with transportation. So I think, for the most part, generally, if you're not voting, I would say every quarter, but you, you have enough intuition to understand a discernment, to know which ones you need to go to attend every month, if there's a lot going on.
Okay. That's me.
I just realized, as I'm going through all mine, I'm all non-voting liaison. There's a lot of voting, though, I couldn't. There's a lot of non-voting, but, you know, I, so youth council, I go once a month. I don't go to everyone, they meet the second and fourth, Tuesday, and even then, I'm always wondering, because they're a working group, is it really necessary that we have a council representative there?
At the long, at youth council?
At the long, at youth council. So, you know, the museum and the library board, you know, and arts and public places, and I forgot to share that stuff, but, um, they, even though I'm a non-voting member, one of the things that the members, the council, it's, or the board that expressed is that they like that I'm there to at least listen to what the priorities are, what the direction is, and, you know, it's helpful for me, but, you know, in the event that I have to not, you know, if I'm unavailable, I could watch it, or, you know, I could just get a, I know one time I had to miss arts and public places, and, um, I just send out my, you know, council updates, and then if anyone had any questions, we just kind of did it via email. And then she gave me an update on the notes and all that, so.
Uh, the ones that I go to, we are membership, so we pay a membership for Indian Solutions, NADA, Dr. Cog, uh, so those, yeah, I'm going to those. Um, but the other two I'm on, NGLA and Historic Preservation, they own us there. And the other thing, before I move on, is what do they want from us? Do they want council updates? Do they want us just to listen? Do they want us there in case they have questions? So those are things maybe pay attention to.
I've been filling in at the water board, and I think I need to continue doing that, especially now I've moved to this water academy.
Sorry.
I agree with Council Yarborough about, um, the North I-25 Coalition, there's always a lot of moving parts, it's to know what's going on. The visit Longmont, I think they would like to have me there every, um, month, but it doesn't change as much as, I mean, I don't think it changes as much as maybe they, they anticipate, you know, it's kind of a, it's, you know, they're building things, so, you know, like this nice championship, too. We've been doing that for a year and a half, so. So, uh, apply is needed, um, but I do like, I will mention that the senior citizen advisory board came on Saturday to the coffee with council and said they wondered when they might have another liaison.
And that's what, um.
It was one of Marsha's.
It was. Yeah, we're gonna go through those really fast and see if, um, Matthew wants the ones left or not.
That makes it feel so exciting.
Well, if it was the beginning of the year, we could all change.
I'm making you channel leftovers, this is fine.
You will, after the election, you will re-dib officially.
Sure. No, that's fine, I just fully expect you to just take council remarks.
Aaron.
Well, I'm gonna speak from my larger role of experience, not just the ones I have right now currently, and, uh, I would say that I absolutely agree that if you, if we're a voting member, you gotta be in those meetings. Um, and those, by and large, are the external boards.
Yeah.
And so, especially the internal boards, especially because of the fact that they're recorded. I don't, unless they're one that they really like council input for whatever odd reason, I don't think it's critical that you go every week. Like, I definitely watch back, uh, planning zoning meetings, for instance, because also, you can hear it often, it's, it's thrilling to watch. It makes Lord of the Rings seem like really short movies.
Yeah, that's good.
And also, I'm able, in case somebody made a comment that, you know, might have glossed over, you can always rewind, so that's nice. I wish it was a little easier to access some of the other videos, uh, for the other boards and commissions, um, or just like.
They're all on YouTube.
They're all on YouTube. So, fair enough.
And she's each have their own group.
So, you know, I get to watch the, love the commercials.
We're running into LRT times, so, um, can we?
That was the point, is that if, if the videos are available, then that usually provides you enough context for what was on the agenda, so.
And the sense of staff on, on the board, too, like Jim and Phil goes to NADA, I mean, Phil, I mean, what am I voting on that I'm there, but Phil knows everything. I can't respond to what, you know, because that's a soapstone from years ago, and they're just coming to the surface now.
Correct.
Um, you know, I don't know.
Well, just, I would say, would that take his direction?
Oh, I do, because I don't know what I'm doing.
Well, there you go. So shall I say, the voting ones, we already said we need to be at, but what about the other ones, can we just put them on a quarterly or every two weeks, depending upon what board you're on? See how that works for the rest of the year?
You mean every other round?
Two months, every other round.
And they're two weeks or? I said weeks.
Some just lend themselves, obviously, going once a month and being there, and the others are like, you know, you just, you don't want to start bailing if you can help it.
Yeah. So here are the boards, um, I think that you, Sean, you had airport advisory, you took that over?
I took that over for Martin, but certainly that could go to.
Do you want to keep it? That's my point.
No, I, I think it should go to Matthew.
I get so many emails about this already, I might as well understand the issues.
Okay. Diane, you had water board, you want to keep it?
I'll keep it.
Okay. The other ones that are senior citizens, where they asked for LMAC, Longmont Multi-Action, Multicultural Action Committee, um, they don't have a, we, we can leave them blank for the rest of the year, probably. But do you want LMAC?
I was gonna offer to take senior citizen.
Yeah, you, yeah. I was just gonna help you do that one.
You can make, you can make that? Um, I, it's once a month, right? I can make that once a month.
Okay.
Yeah, I can make that once a month, and then I can certainly cover CML and SAB if no one else is covering those. If that would be helpful.
What was CML?
Sustainability Advisory Board.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be helpful.
That'd be very helpful.
And then CML?
Yes. And when you get, we don't need anybody anymore, they're done.
Correct. Like, you want to keep PNC?
If you want it, you can have it.
I'm not looking to take it from you if you want it, but I, I, I know, I know it, so. It wouldn't be hard if you wanted to really push that one free of some time.
What is it, PNC?
PNC, sorry.
Oh, PNC, I think it's. Uh, I don't, I.
If you want to take it on that much.
Yeah, that's a lot.
All right, then you can keep it there.
You know, after you're, you're left, after you're left. If you can see how it acts in my skill set, yeah.
If you like to sit up, you'll run.
Well, I won't beat her, so you don't have to let me.
Okay, that's it.
You do, you do.
Did you get what you needed?
CML, SAB, senior citizen.
So FYI, really fast, next week, we need, go ahead and say what you want.
Oh, so next week, um, uh, you'll have to remind me when in the agenda we do this, but I'll be asking for, uh, three virtual attendances to city council based on previous dis-schedule professional obligations, um, if that's all right. Don't worry, there's no lease out of state that I'm signing, but.
Same, we're too scheduled, so.
No, it's, uh, once, once in April, um, for the siting and permitting conference in Seattle that I'm going to for work, uh, and then, uh, two, twice, uh, the first two weeks of August for, um, the National Brown Fields Conference, uh, which is for work, but actually is how it evolved.
So what, what day is that, when in April?
That's the 16th of April, I think it is, so when everyone is relieved from finishing their tasks.
I just have, uh, I'm gonna be absent on the 21st.
So that'll be the request. I think those are the only conflicts I have with the rest of the year.
As a reminder, please email the city manager staff if you need to get out of office, because you're taking the calendar, watch.
Make sure we have.
When you're not, when you're gonna be out, missed meetings, you email CML to pull it out, or you know, you guys send you somewhere.
So we are, we are adjourned, we need to get LNJ.
LNJ, all right.